Okay, everyone, let's go ahead and start this meeting. Because you are a new advisory planning commissioner, the majority of you, there's no chair. So that's why I'm talking. In most meetings, you won't be hearing quite as much from me, but I'll go ahead and get this meeting started. So you see before you an agenda. The one thing I'll insert is that after adoption of the agenda, I would recommend that you appoint a chair so that I will stop talking. And so being that as it may, can I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
I see Bill Scott is a seconder.
I'll second that.
Okay, Walter, all in favor? All right, excellent. So so now if with your indulgence, I would like to add the selection of a chair. So the chair is identified for the year. So this would be the the selection of a chair for the remainder of this year. Any nominations?
I'd like to know my Bill Scott.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations or would you like to vote on that? Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Bill Scott as the chair. I see Andrew, Maureen, Walter, Susan. Okay, thank you. So congratulations, Bill. Welcome back. It's been a pleasure.
Congratulations or condolences. I didn't back fast enough. That's what happens in volunteering, right? Thank you all for the confidence that you placed in me to continue as chair. So we'll move on to to the agenda. The first is to approve the minutes of the March 3, 2021 meeting. And since Susan and I are the only two that were attendants at the time, I'll make the motion to adopt the minutes as presented. Susan, would you like to second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed of any? I can't see everyone, so that's the unfortunate thing. So I think everybody was in favor. It will note that is carried. Prior to moving to the business, the oh, is there any business arising from the minute, sorry?
No.
Seeing none. So prior to our new business, I'm going to read this introductory statement. This is a meeting at the town of Qualicon Beach Advisory Planning Commission pursuant to March 26, 2020, ministerial order number N 083. Members of the APC may participate in this meeting utilizing electronic or other communication facilities, and members of the public will not be allowed to attend this meeting of the APC. After this meeting, an audio recording will be made available to the public in lieu of attendance at the meeting. The recording will be made available to, I'm sorry, the recording will be available on the town's website until such time as the application or issue is no longer under consideration by council, at which point the recording will be deleted. The APC makes recommendations to council on matters respecting land use, community planning, or related bylaws and permits as referred by council or the director of planning. The APC is advisory and does not have any direct approval, ownership, or authority over matters that are referred to it. Council may or may not adopt the recommendations made by the commission. The following will be the sequence of each item on the agenda. Short introduction to the application from town staff. Presentation by the applicant. Questions to the applicant. APC discussion and motion. To ensure the meeting is productive and respectful, we ask that the applicants only speak in response to the questions and also to the to the commission members. I'd like to continue the process or the the protocol that we adopted in last year. And that is the in the first round, after the applicant has made the presentation, each of us will be offered an opportunity to ask questions, to clarify, or to provide some comment regarding changes that may be appropriate and for have a discussion between the applicant and and the member. And we'll do that maybe a couple of times if if there are some comments that come from a previous answer. After that, we would then go into APC discussion for prior to the motion. And I will call on each member individually to provide their comments, merits to to the application. And then we'll repeat that so that each chapter, each member has an opportunity to respond to what the previous member has 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 made comment on. So with that going forward, I would then refer to the agenda, the new business. This is development permit application. Get the right one. Here we are, business app or pardon me, a zoning amendment for 188 Sunningdale Road East. So we will turn it over to the applicant, John.
Mr. Chair, if I could just give a brief introduction and
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I know we're all we're all excited to hear what Mr. Larson has to say. But I'll just I'll just give a very brief introduction.
Sorry.
You know, it's okay. The the owner of 188 Sunningdale Road has made an application to amend the zoning to permit a subdivision into three parcels. Each of these parcels would permit one single family dwelling. So this property is currently identified as mixed residential one in the official community plan and designated R2, which would currently permit a single family dwelling or a duplex. So what we're seeing here is an increase in density, not a not a huge increase in density above the two units that are proposed. But it is somewhat unique in terms of the context of the town. And and you'll see some comments that in that regard later in in this memo. So as the memo notes, it is in an area where the town is encouraging densification. It the density proposed is significantly below the maximum of density that you would see targeted in the OCP, the 60 units per hectare. That's not necessarily a bad thing, certainly a matter of perspective. But but it is noted in the staff memo that although it's an increase, it's not a dramatic increase. The single family dwellings that are proposed. Certainly, the the majority of our dwellings in the town are single family. So if you look at it solely from that perspective, you could say, well, this is not necessarily unique to the community. But what is very unique, if you look at this proposal as compared to others that we've seen or most of the houses in town, the the lots are extremely small. And so they're they're approximately half the size of the the typical town lot. And that would be a typical, say, chart well lot. So they're they're very, very small. And the houses are appropriately sized and sort of a two story context. So that's my my general comments, but I do want to very briefly touch on the the issues to be discussed today. And because this is the first meeting of this this advisory planning commission, just in terms of the types of things that warrant consideration and discussion among the group. So it's first of all, it's a it's a zoning amendment. And for zoning amendments, you can really incorporate any aspects from the official community plan that you'd like to bring into the discussion. So it's different than a development permit. We will certainly be seeing a lot of development permits with this group. And when you have a development permit, you're you're essentially looking at a very specific set of guidelines to figure out, does it meet these guidelines or not? How how could we make it closer to complying with those guidelines? Zoning amendments much more organic in the discussion. You can you can take it in pretty much any direction that you you want, as long as it's sort of rooted in the official community plan in some way. There's lots of comments in the memo with regard to specific official community plan policies in the area in which this application is is located. So with that, I will hand it back to you, Mr. Chair, and we can hear from the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke, and thank you for clarifying the two types of applications that we may be receiving. John, it is now your turn.
Super, thank you very much. Thanks, Luke, and thank you to all the members of the APC here. It's a pretty sunny day. I'm sure everyone has somewhere to be, so it's very nice to be able to for you to take the time to hear a little bit about our application. So I'm just going to run you through a few slides that we've prepared to give you a brief overview of the project at 188 Sunningdale. And then I'll look forward to answering your questions. I I know most of you, Maureen, we introduced ourselves briefly, but I'm also with with Jeremy Larson, Jamie Larson, and Brian Larson. Those are my partners. And by last name, you can tell they're my family members as well. So we are the the development group. I'm just the the person who's going to present here today. So if you give me one second, I'm gonna try to share my screen here. So maybe you can just confirm that everyone can see the screen there.
Yes, I can.
Yep. Awesome. Okay, so the application, I'm gonna just run through the context, the proposed land use and just some of the features. Here in the slides, you're seeing the subject property. It's located at the corner of Sunningdale and Burwick. Some sort of landmarks. Here's the gardens here, the tennis courts, the Burwick Development, Farmers Market. This is the intersection here of of Harlequin Memorial. So this is really
Maybe I'm not seeing what you're having, just seeing the elevations perspective of the buildings.
Okay, let me see. It says sharing.
I think you're sharing the wrong screen, maybe.
Quite possible. Sorry, we'll miss you guys.
We're not looking at vacation photos. We're okay.
True story. Okay, so let's see if we can do this once more.
It sounded like you were trying to bring up the map that you
I was for sure. Thank you for stopping me.
I couldn't make sense of it.
Yeah. Can you see the perspective there now?
That's the perspective.
Yeah, I'm just gonna try shifting.
Do you see? There you go.
All right, thank you and sorry about that. Okay, so the the location, Sunningdale, Burwick. So 188 is right at the corner. And then here are those landmarks I mentioned, the gardens, Burwick, Farmers Market. So we are within the village neighborhood as as Luke mentioned. We're about two and a half blocks from the commercial core, which is, you know, this is the start of it, the intersection of Harlequin and and Memorial. As Luke mentioned, current zoning residential two, we are within the village neighborhood and the official community plan land use is is mixed residential one. This is just a slightly blown up version of that that ortho layover. And we're seeing the three units that we're proposing on the site. The existing home on the property, if if any of you have been by, it's a very old home. It has reached the end of its usable life cycle. So the proposal is to replace that home with these three new detached dwelling units. These buildings are going to be on grade buildings, which means vehicle access, master bedroom, open living plan is all on one floor. I think this is important because it represents an age friendly housing choice within walking distance to the downtown. When I say age friendly, that means this product type, it it meets the needs of many different demographic users, whether that's family or retiree, and that we think is an important aspect of the the application. The proposed development, in our opinion, represents an incremental increase in density. But it does this while ensuring that it's compatible and cohesive and complementary with the surrounding home, homes and neighborhood. I think that, you know, this is something that we as a group have been very cautious and very adamant about ensuring that the development proposals we bring forward are something that improves the neighborhood, that welcomes some increased density, but does it in a way that ensures we're not overwhelming the the neighborhood. And I think that's a big part of what this proposal is is intending to do. So again, as shown, typical home is on great access. And then upstairs presents an opportunity for additional bedrooms, two bedrooms in a loft is the typical concept. The layout of the home, as I said, meets these these multiple needs. And I think that, you know, right now, one thing that is hard to 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 miss within the village neighborhood is we're seeing a glut of apartment style condominiums be proposed and constructed like to the tune of hundreds currently either under construction or or in the proposal or pre or rezoning stages. You know, I we made a quick list of of some of these things on railway. There's 17 units, the college in 45 units, beach and first. We have the affordable housing, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 50, 56 units, something like that. There's First Avenue, there's East Village, there's the bus garage. All of those developments are are positioned to be apartment style condominium. You know, that one size doesn't always, well, it doesn't fit all. And and we believe that this product type that we're presenting is going to increase the diversity of housing choice while providing some increased density, but going to introduce that bit of variety within the neighborhood, within the village neighborhood, that's going to add to some vibrancy. A family with a bit of yard space is something that, you know, in a lot of cases is of 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 high importance. The building scale, it's it's one and a half story is the the massing of the proposed development. The site is has significant grade. If you've been by the site, it falls along Burwick. The the homes are designed in a way so they can follow the natural contour of the site. By detaching the homes from one another, it's allowed us to step the buildings in a very simplistic way, allowing it to better integrate with the roadway, better integrate with the the site that it's it's being proposed on. Pretty careful attention has been paid to the form and character of the buildings. Picturist sort of streetscape with, you know, lots of movement and articulation in both the roof lines as well as the the plane of the building. I think an important note, when you look at decreasing setbacks on a property, it's so critical to understand the context of that. You can see this in the landscape plan. You know, we are asking for, you know, pretty significant reductions in the the setbacks, but we're we're placing the porch as the forward most mass, the garage door stepped back just subtly from that. But then the great room, for instance, has stepped much farther back from that. So yes, we are looking for the the relaxation, but we have really carefully articulated the plane of the building to make sure that it doesn't become a dominant mass close proximity to the road. It's it's quite soft and quite nicely presented. The the landscape, we're on the landscape here, so I'll just touch on that. The the key is to provide meaningful outdoor living spaces for each of the homes, private rear yards that allow a meaningful space to come out and enjoy the yard. The interface with the road is another critical aspect. So you see that we have quite a layered approach to the landscape. It starts with boulevard trees, low lying drought tolerant plants within that boulevard, landscape screens at the face of the the property. These are all things that, you know, in our experience, and I think this next slide is going to show, you know, lends to a really successful, a really interesting streetscape. So these are, these are the our past projects, our most recent past projects. This one here on the corner of Mill and Cedar. This one even more recent on the corner of First Avenue here in Hemlock. These are good examples of that boulevard streetscape that we'll be we'll be proposing in this particular development. The and these, this is as recent as just a few months. You know, so the street trees haven't quite developed, but street tree hedge screening, drought tolerant plants, in this case, the some grass in the boulevard and then some layby parking. So really picturesque landscape to be the interface to the roadway. On green building, I I know it was noted in the staff report about step code. You know, our building contractor, our building partner, very familiar with built green and energy star as a standard. Our last development was energy modeled at a EnerGuide 59 rating, which is the energy star system. What that is about 25% less energy consumption than a standard code built home. It's equivalent to about a two and a step code, two and a half, somewhere in around there. We're still continuing on this method of quantifying the building performance. It comes with an energy, energy evaluation and then a quantification through lower door testing at the end. But we're we're more than happy to bring that equivalency to the step code rating as well. But the buildings are high performance. We're using air source heat pumps, on demand hot water, HRVs, so heat recovery ventilators. You know, these are all standard for us in our 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 buildings. And we think that that's a critical part to ensuring that they're a positive part of of new construction within within the community. You know, energy efficiency is such a critical aspect. So we want to be on the leading edge of that. We believe we are and we're continuing always to work at at advancing it to ensure that we're at the the leading edge there. I want to jump back because I I skipped over the 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 parking aspect of the the property. So we believe that provisions being made for more than adequate parking. Each of the homes has a enclosed, single car garage, an oversized, single car garage for one vehicle. The driveway, there's about 28 feet of driveway depth from edge of pavement to the face of the door. So there's lots of room for additional cars to be parked in each of the driveways. And then much like every neighborhood, there is going to be provision for layby parking along the streetway. It will be off asphalt in a permeable surface. It's not formal in such that it it integrates better with the sort of streets, streetscape that exists within the neighborhood, which is quite informal, pretty soft and relaxed interface at the the roadway. Stormwater, we we are currently working with our geotechnical engineer on a detailed stormwater management plan. We have consulted with geotechnical and civil engineers. We're confident there's a a solution to stormwater management on the site. We did, we have had conversations with the town's engineering department. We're looking at an innovative solution that would include some some bio swale, rain garden type application in the Sunningdale Road allowance. That report is not yet complete, but we're right on the threshold of it. So we we fully appreciate that that will be a condition of the rezoning. And we're fully prepared to have a, you know, what we believe is going to be a pretty innovative and appropriate solution to stormwater management. I think generally speaking, that's that's the summary of the project. We think that this is something that is very compatible, complementary with the existing neighborhood, but represents a nice increase in density, provides some 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 housing choice and variety to what we believe is a a critical aspect of of the village neighborhood, having some of this small lot in fill development. We're proud of the ones we've done so far. We think they've been very well received within the neighborhood and also to the to those who are using it. We we have on on Hemlock, for instance, it's a multi generational. It's a son and his wife in one and a father and and mother in the other. We think it's just an excellent land use within the fringes of the village neighborhood. So we'll be excited to hear your questions, your comments. And at that, I'll turn it all back over to the chair and stop sharing here.
Thank you very much, John. Well, we'll start our conversation with you with Andrew.
Oh, thank you very much. So at this time, I can just make general comments. Is that right?
No, Andrew, what we'd like to do is is there any clarification to the information that John has presented that you're required to to understand? And and what we want to do is the merits of of the application. I want to hold till we have the discussion amongst the the members. If you have suggestions that you want to to provide to John for for a comment, that is helpful. But I don't think we want to get into how you feel about the project other than improvements too.
Okay, I'd like to know more about on the existing drawings. There are several existing concrete, rock and brick retaining walls that deal with the quite extreme slope from the west side of this property or south side, I guess, down towards the Sunningdale. How do you propose to deal with that very high corner at the back of these buildings? And it relates to another question, your comment, which is how is the drainage going to work? Because it's quite an extreme slope and you've got lower floor levels as you go down the hill. How are you going to mitigate the risk of any flood or inappropriate drainage into the building lower than the one above?
If I can through the chair, Bill, it's I'll just always go through the chair and answers that. Okay, good questions, Andrew. So yes, you're right, there is, there is an extreme high corner in the southwest. Currently, there is about a 30 inch retaining wall at the front and then it graduates into sort of a multi terrace retaining in the the back corner. So we do envision installing some retaining. The first home will be slightly higher than the the current existing carport there. So our plan would be to bring the floor elevation of the first unit up to the top of the retaining wall. The first, the low section of the retaining wall. And then we're stepping the buildings down the back corner. And I wish I had the images in front of me. I know Brian will be chomping. We have an awesome idea for a courtyard type setting in the rear yard of that particular unit. There will be about a five foot retaining wall in that back south west corner. But in our opinion, the way that it sort of terraces with the landscape coming over it, the established hedge line there, there's a really great solution in that corner. As a release to drainage, I mean, the the good news is is that there is a a ditch in the front of the the site. We will be filling that ditch in. We will be taking all of our rainwater leaders to that ditch. The site proposed site coverage is about 55%. So as you can imagine, there's a tremendous amount of the the water is going to be collected. But then we would be using intercept trenches at each property line, which means we'll be collecting water before it hits the foundations and redirecting it to the the stormwater management plan, which, like I said, the first suggestion that staff, engineering staff made to us was that, you know, there are these large road allowances within both Burwick and Sunningdale, but specifically Sunningdale. And the town is very amenable to seeing us integrate some sort of bio swale rain garden to assist in ensuring that pre development flows are not exceeded. So I think the it's all in the works. It the whole site slopes down, so we're confident we're not going to have an issue with water moving or migrating down the slope as provided we intercept at the locations of the foundations. You know, our experience is such that, you know, these types of sloping sites, it takes careful planning. But with careful planning, you can certainly have a successful stormwater plan.
Okay, thank you. I have another item about the perimeter of the property on the west side, where the next house along Sunningdale is higher up, I think. It's it's a higher up to slope. What do you propose to do about site containment there? And am I not right in assuming that the house next door is going to look over into the patios of the of the buildings you're proposing?
Sorry, I was muted there. I if it's okay from the chair, if I could screen share again, and I can just show everyone sort of what we're talking about here.
Certainly, John. Certainly, John.
So I think, Andrew, what you were talking about, this is the home to the west?
Yes.
And in this area right here, if you visit the site, it naturally sort of grades down into the property here. And Andrew, you're asking, would this house be overlooking these patios? The orientation of this house, their rear yard is orientated towards the south side. So, you know, the critical privacy interface, I think, is mitigated by the fact that, you know, in large part, it does orientate towards its private rear yard. How we'll be dealing with grading is similar to this corner. So this corner will have a retaining structure at it. And then as we terrace down, there is a small retaining structure required in this corner. And then there is no retaining structure required currently in this corner. There is grading challenges to the site, but part of our solution with detaching the buildings allows us to more appropriately deal with that grading as we go along. The contours of the site are going to be manipulated slightly from what they are right now by raising the first unit up. Like I mentioned, it is going to come up about thirty inches at this corner. But then we step, as you can see in the illustrations here, we step the buildings down. We even stepped the garage down, for instance, from the main floor to ensure that we're constantly adapting to that grade fall as it comes along the along the property. So, you know, that's, I guess, my answer to that.
Okay, my next point is something that I think is really serious and I'm probably overreacting due to a number of various experiences in my life. But second-floor occupied space in a wood-framed dwelling. I don't know what the fire codes are. I don't know what the building code is. I'm always nervous if there isn't two means of egress. What's your feeling about that? And what is the building code? What is the fire code?
Yeah, so, fair question. Code requires you to have direct access from every bedroom or every sleeping room to the outside. So from a bedroom like this, one of these operable windows would open to the outside so that you would not have to travel through the home in order to get out. That is all that's required from code. So, and that's critical and important, and certainly we follow those regulations. So each of these buildings has two, or each of these buildings, each of these rooms, rather, have two windows. They would have operable windows on both sides. The typical, you know, fire safety plan for a building like this would include, you know, a path of travel to an exit door and then in emergency situations out through a window of a minimum size. The code requires that there's certain clearances when that window's open. Can't be too tall from the floor so that you could exit to the outside.
Okay, so you're meeting the fire exit codes with these windows?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
No, I just got, I just got one more tip from my team. These buildings are fully sprinkled buildings as well.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay, great. Okay, my last comment, I don't know, it's more for Luke, I guess. And it's just a question. I mean, I'm a person who's said for years, we need densification and we need densification that's sensitively done. And we're getting it. But how do we know when we introduce an opportunity for densification into what's essentially a single-family neighborhood? What if everybody wants to do it? Then all of a sudden, we've got a totally different neighborhood. And I'm just wondering, how do we, how do we control that? Or are we saying implicitly by approving a project like this that we want every lot to be developed this way? I don't know where the balance is. I think it's going to be a question that's more and more important for the town and more and more important for Luke as we do more and more of this. The other comment that's related to this densification is you said a lot about cars and parking and street widths. And densification really means we're turning a car-oriented single-family neighborhood into what's more and more of a pedestrianized neighborhood because there are more and more people. So when do we start doing the sidewalks? When do we start recognizing, hey, densification, more people? Therefore, we need more sidewalk amenities. It's just a question I don't know the answer to. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Andrew. Walter?
I've got a couple of things. And I think a couple would be directed to Luke, but just context of what getting additional housing density, quality. As a group, consideration for a couple of duplexes. Is that taken on or thought about perhaps as being another option? Just to get the densification up. We have got the opportunity here. Or is that something that was not considered at all? John?
Hi, Walter, thanks for the question. It absolutely was. And I think that early on, we identified, much to some of the points Andrew brought up, that there are some challenges with this site that that introduce some design parameters that are challenging to overcome, not the least of which is the grading. And I think when we looked at two duplexes, it was just too small for us to effectively achieve the two duplexes with the vehicle parking that we wanted to have. And we think that, I agree with some of Andrew's comments about, you know, being close to town, in theory, this should be a less vehicle-driven type building typology. But realistically, we still have, you know, most people have one vehicle. So we wanted to, for us, from a marketing perspective, from a sales perspective, the single-vehicle garage is important. So the sweet spot for us, when we analyze, and we analyzed the lot very carefully because you spend a lot of money purchasing these, rezoning them, developing them, you know, servicing them, development cost charges. I mean, you know, an extra unit has some benefit, but what it did was just push us past that product type that we know we want to achieve. So the three allows us to step, allows us to naturally integrate with the site and allowed us to get to the product type that we knew we wanted to achieve, so.
Thanks, John. I kind of thought that grading is a big part of why it went to three units. The other thing is, three separate units. I'm also a little confused about this. And I don't know if this is a town issue or not, but this idea of street design shall be pedestrian-friendly rather than car-friendly. And there's a contribution that's made to, by the developer, to the town. What, and it's equal to the amount of basically sidewalk parking along the streetscapes. So that's a fairly significant contribution to the town by the developer in this case. I'm thinking, I have no idea what that is. But why is it, why, what does the town think in terms of a contribution like that? In lieu of trying to make the site and immediate vicinity upgraded to, so that is, that it meets that pedestrian-friendly appearance. And in large part, I think the larcens have done a good job here in trying to get it to the street-friendly, pedestrian-friendly program. And is there something else that we can do in context and with the town so that there's more of a partnership so that we do get it to meet that criteria? So I don't know if it's more directed at Luke or at John.
Walter, I'm going to direct the first part to Luke to have you, to have him provide you with an understanding of the contribution to the sidewalk fund. This has come up previously last year in a couple of infill. So Luke can provide that for us.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the idea for a contribution came out of the fact that when properties develop, we do have the option of requesting a sidewalk, especially in an area like this where it's intended for densification, very much an emphasis on walkability. The challenge is that because these tend to be isolated sites and relatively small with no direct connection to other sites that are going to be developing in the foreseeable future, we could end up in a scenario where you have a little section of sidewalk and then you walk on the road and then a little section of sidewalk and then you walk on the road. So those sections might be disjointed for the next twenty years. So instead of going that way, what we thought of is, why don't we accept a contribution instead so that we build a sidewalk reserve account and we can tackle larger sections all at once? So for example, in the village neighborhood, there's going to be some high priority area that definitely needs a sidewalk. And as properties develop, if they've been contributing to this fund, then the town has the money to do it. So that's the rationale. Now, having said that, if a developer came along and said, "Thank you, but no, thank you. We really want to build a sidewalk here because we think it'll make for a really nice streetscape." We would absolutely be open to that. But, you know, as it stands, we're heading in the direction of tackling larger projects at once rather than piecemeal sections of sidewalk.
Thank you, Luke. Just to pass it over to John to provide his input in terms of wanting to make the contribution as opposed to putting the sidewalk in.
Luke and I have had some good conversations about this. And I think even with the previous APC, I've had this conversation with them. We're a bit torn. I mean, at this point, we pay for the sidewalk but get no benefit out of it, which is, there's kind of an irony there. But we've been, we've kind of been the guinea pig to a certain extent with the projects we did on Cedar and Mill and the other section along Mill, which I also did with a different developer, where we did install the sidewalks. They are an anomaly to the street. You know, it's likely that they will be heaving and being ground down before the next sections of sidewalks are going to be added onto them. So there wasn't really a rhythm to continue the sidewalks down the street in a meaningful way. So, you know, we certainly don't like the idea of, you know, and it's expensive. Like, I think the current numbers are, you know, at least a couple hundred dollars a meter that we're contributing to a fund and we see absolutely no benefit to it, from it. But we're expected to also upgrade the street frontage in a way that, you know, enhances the neighborhood, which is what we're proposing right now. The idea of contributing, you know, and it all going into a communal pot from a community member's perspective, we understand it. Because what that means is when there is an area that's due for a sidewalk, we'll have the ability to do a large stretch and the town will have the money. So, you know, we're of two minds. It's expensive investment for us for no benefit to the development, but you get kind of used to that in the development game.
But that leads me to the next thought. When we look at these developments, we look at them in terms of fifty, sixty, seventy years if possible. And to put a surface in front of the build of these homes with gravel, for instance, that's, that'll be, over time, it'll become a maintenance thing that we're going to have to look at. And I'm thinking in terms of permanent sidewalks. As an alternative, has it been considered that perhaps there would be some sort of a permeable paving of some sort there instead to help manage some of the stormwater that's on the hillside and use that as a replacement? Is that of benefit to the project? And of benefit to the town in the long term, in terms of maintenance?
If I can quickly build through the, or through the chair, rather, sorry. We have sorry. We have in both of the previous projects used cellular turf stone, which is a composite material that's placed down and then it's infilled with gravel. It's permeable, so it's a parking surface, but a permeable. The problem we've had with it, and you can talk to the engineering department as well, like a long mill, is it becomes so densely packed that it's not draining. So in the most recent project, we went back to just doing loose gravel so that the water is permeating through it. Gravel on a properly compacted base provides more than sufficient bearing capacity for you to roll a car over it without, you know, damaging anything. So the idea of the turfcrete or the cellular permeable driving surface just didn't actually work very well. But it has been tried.
I find that gravel might, I, this is back to the town, whether or not there's a maintenance issue with snow, you know, snow clearing and whatever else that goes along there. But it's something that the town's come up with. There's a benefit to the town for sidewalks at another location. But if we could take care of some of those things up in the location that we're talking about, that would be a better benefit to this particular development. A couple of other things. I'm curious about and you know this about the energy step code. We're we're finding that the energy step code is becoming more and more the norm as a model for energy efficiencies as opposed, and it's been used by a lot by provincial government, BC Housing, for instance. Have you considered going to the higher level of the energy code? And I don't know if the town is considering a standard that we may want to be looking at in the future. But you're about two and a half. I'm finding on projects, it's easy to get to three. And also, we're attempting to go for step four on some duplexes we're working on. So the question is, I guess, your articulation on your homes does affect, obviously, the step code. But has that been considered and maybe looking at that as well in this project? Maybe just pick it up a little bit on the, on the energy efficiency levels and getting it and maybe look at the articulation a little differently in terms of being a bit more modest on that side. I know we want to keep the articulation in. I don't want to lose it, but still, I think modest increases in insulation or equipment and things like that and getting it up to step three, step four, possible. Does that be considered by you guys?
Yeah, absolutely, Walter. And I think what I tried to highlight there is, like, because our building partner was so familiar with Energy Star as a metric, it's been easier for us to change or chase, rather, the energy guide rating than it has been to fit into the, you know, the step code mold. But we're on top of that. And I would say that it's very simple. Like, our airtightness is exceptional. Our mechanical systems are exceptional. You know, as it relates to our energy advice, like, with each of these, we're using an energy modeler, an energy advisor. So for us to move into step three, I don't think is going to be any issue, but it just hasn't been the metric we've been using. But we understand, you know, obviously, and to be fair, like, the municipalities aren't using them either. Like, as a municipality or as a town, rather, Qualcomm doesn't require any step, any version of the step code with new residential development. Not at this point. The province is obviously pointing them towards towards implementing those things. And there is, to my knowledge, strategy in place. But and it's for us, it's for a long time, it's been easier for the consumer to understand an energuide rating than it has been to try and give them, you know, some, some other metrics. So that's what we've been using, but we were more than happy to adapt and, and show equivalencies to step code. And I think that that's where we need to go. So yes, been considered and certainly, certainly something we're going to be working on with the project. But I think the important message is this will absolutely be a quantified, measured, high performing residential building.
Yeah, eventually, we're all going to be on the step code, whether we like it anyways, through the National Building Code. And so if we can beat them to the, to the finish line and do it first, that'd be kind of nice, too. Just looking at a couple of other notes here and. Yeah, I think between what Andrew's asked and clarified, that's all good.
I like what I see, actually.
Thank you, Walter. Maureen.
Need to unmute here. Well, that's good when you don't go first to get some of your questions already answered or asked by other people. Overall, I, I love this sort of thing. I think it's a great way to sensitively densify, but still retain our single family quality of our neighborhoods. However, I like your term, John, was it your, your product type? How I put it, you know, we've got the fixation on everybody having to have their own house on their own, own property. And I think, you know, an example, but it's an example what's happening here. I have no problem with the very compact units on a smaller lot. And, and forgive me, I am kind of new to this. And maybe this has, is something that's come up. But this having to provide separation and create three separate lots so that you get this 1.5 setback between, you know, creating the new property line and the building. So basically, what you get is, is like four feet of dead space for each piece of property where really nothing happens. That ends up to be like 8% of the lot area is, is one, one dead, sort of dead side. You did say you're sprinkler. So, because I did have concerns about, of course, when you do pull the buildings apart, you can't open up openings and windows. So, which you can do if, if the building sprinkled at that close, you know, close proximity. But again, somebody did raise the question of duplex. Did you at any point consider basically a zero lot line for the first, the upper two, keeping the one on the corner separate, but which would then open up a little bit more side yard and, and give a little bit maybe more usable, a better use of the, of the, the limited land or space?
Yeah, good points and, and good questions. So I think the short answer is yes, we did evaluate duplexes. Zero lot line is a real nuisance with the building code. As soon as you go beyond 1.2 meters towards the property line, we're looking at fully non-combustible. We're looking at a very different type of construction for the exposed building face, not one that is economically viable. And that's, it's annoying because the building code can't really look at what's happening on the property beside it. It just looks at the bounds of the property and says, if you are this close to the property line, you must construct in this way, even though the other home would be 10 feet away from it on the next property. It can't look through that lens. It looks specifically through the lens that is unique to that one property. So zero lot line is not a format that we can do without going to a full firewall, which would be a concrete block wall on the one side, which, you know, provides, you know, little opportunity for, you know, sort of economic viability as well as aesthetics. It's, you know, it's much less desirable. So zero lot line is not an option for us. The duplex, that's what we've been building in town. Like, that's, that's our preferred model. It works really well. The challenge with this site, again, based on the grading, based on the, the width of the property, it just made more sense. We got to a sweet spot at the three units than, than trying to manipulate to get the, the four. Just, just simply getting vehicles into the units is a very challenging thing along the front of Berwick. You know, we know we can do a great job. We're, we're a quality first bunch. Like, if, if we feel like we can do a great job of two duplexes, we would have. What we know is we can do a really great job of these three single families, and that's where we landed.
I guess I was thinking one duplex and one single family, which basically would almost be, is not far off what might, might be buildable without all the rezoning where you have, you know, because they, it is zoned, currently zoned for duplex. And then I'm assuming like a third carriage house or, or, you know, laneway house, whatever they call them. So you're getting those three living spaces, but just a different arrangement. So one duplex and then one, and then the one, the corner one basically staying as a single, yeah, single unit. So, yeah, as I say, it's just unfortunate you get those, those real dead spaces when you have to separate with such a small, small yard that's really not doing anything. And when you are so limited in your, in your lot size. So just as I say, asking if that, you know, if you had explored that sort of thing. You say grade, I trust. So there's no, no basements. Will they be on crawl space?
They are on crawl space.
Yeah. So you can put your services and some of that, that stuff down, down in the crawl space. And again, make, take advantage of this floor space that you're enclosing. Um, let's check my questions here. I'm, I'm just going to put my two cents in. I think your energy rating is great. I'm so glad you're not using the step code. I have not had good experience. I think the step code is, is really got its problematic. But the fact that you are addressing to a fairly good energy rating, I think that's, that's great. So I'll just put my two cents in there. Yeah. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Susan?
I have no further questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just a couple of clarifications, John. On setbacks, on page two of our report from, from staff, it indicated that the exterior lot, or I should say side yard, was 4.5 meters. But on your site plan, you showed us two meters. I assume that your site plan is correct and that the minister staff got it wrong?
Um, yes, I don't have the benefit of having your, the staff report right in front of me. But the, the proposed setback for exterior side yard, which would be the, the lot line flanking Sunningdale Road East is two meters and not 4.5.
That's important. It's on your plan. That's important. The other is just a typo that you had a parcel coverage. That's on page five of your summary. You have lot B showing three, 309.1 square meters being 33, 27.1 square feet. You reversed the two and seven.
Thank you.
The smaller lot had a bigger square foot. I'm not sure.
You'll be charged.
Small point, but those things jump out at me. Okay, on the landscaping plan, and that's something that council definitely wanted us to, or for you to, to provide us with and for us to address. So you have basically submitted a tree and vegetation management plan by saying everything's being removed. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, the policy from, from planning is to have a tree and vegetation management plan prepared. The challenge for us is there really actually is only one tree on the property. The, there is one that we considered a boundary tree that will certainly be speaking with the neighbor about. But, you know, having an arborist come out and do a management plan for one tree doesn't make any sense. So what we wanted to show council and the APC is, you know, take a look at the landscape plan. We have a very comprehensive plan for the boulevards to, to, you know, not only, you know, significantly add to the inventory of trees, but do so in a way that, you know, I think it's going to make for a really spectacular streetscape there.
Well, certainly, having looked at, at the property, there's nothing, there's nothing to say there. And on, on your landscape plan, you show specimen trees. What is a specimen tree?
No idea. No, I'm just kidding. Well, they're going to be selected. A specimen is just something that is, you know, in my, I should let Jamie answer this because he, he's been the landscape.
I'll put him on, put him on the.
But a feature, a feature tree. We're going to have boulevard trees, which would be trees that have branches starting no lower than a certain height that you can see under for visibility for vehicles and pedestrians. But then we're going to have specimen trees like, you know, something that's in the, in the, I think he says four to five foot range. So it's sort of more ornamental decorative cherries or maples or, I'm going to wait for Jamie to chime in and give me a, a text on that. But that's the idea.
Well, I can, is it possible for those particular items to be very specified on the plan once you present this to council? Because they definitely wanted to have you submitting a landscape plan. And I think a landscape plan has to identify very specifically the plantings.
Yeah, you know what? We'd be more than happy to do that. But here's, I'll tell you a little trick in, in landscape design. I mean, the availability of plants at the time of you're putting them in can be a big factor. So, you know, we might specify a beautiful boulevard tree and then realize that, you know, they're no, they're not available at that particular time. So we could, we could specify, we handpick all of the plants that go into each of our projects. It's a big part of what we think makes a really great development is landscape. So we absolutely could specify. Then what happens is from our landscape plan, we would have a, a estimate and a bond would be placed to ensure that we, we execute as per plan. But that doesn't mean that we don't substitute if required on the, the tree specifications.
Okay. And on the rainwater, rainwater management plan, which again, council asked us to, to review. And as you've indicated, you're still working on it. So I think that would then continue as a condition with, in our subject to. Just back to the sidewalk. Municipalities love Rob Peter to pay Paul. So they keep a lot of money to do things that they should have done a long time ago, which I think in this case is a sidewalk plan here, unfortunately. Would you prefer to put the sidewalk in?
As I mentioned, we're kind of a mixed opinion. Like, you know, the nice, the sort of softer interface that exists within the neighborhood is one that, you know, it works pretty well. I mean, to be the only guy on the block with the sidewalk, like, I don't know if any of you walked down Mill Road at all, but I, I live right around the corner. So I walk down there all the time. I mean, it's somewhat awkward to jog onto the sidewalk and then jog back down and then hit the, the asphalt apron or the gravel apron. So I, I get it. I think as we, the early phases of these infills and redevelopments take place, it probably makes good sense to hold off. There's nothing worse than, you know, one sidewalk, you know, sort of heaving and being old and then connecting to a new. Like, I do think there's some merit to doing it in a more meaningful chunk. And my, I only say that from my experience on, on Mill. You know, it was, you know, it kind of feels a bit makeshift. It doesn't feel meaningful. It's not a big enough stretch. So I, I think at this point, you know, we don't, we don't like the idea of contributing something that doesn't directly contribute to our development, but we understand the bigger picture, which is a community picture, which, you know, that money is going to be used to improve something within the community. So, you know, we, we sort of grin and swallow and bear the cost of, of a sidewalk somewhere else.
I would say that to put a sidewalk in would take away the opportunity to park that second vehicle in the driveway, correct? Because it'd be coming, go down to the road right away?
Well, it does. But what it would also introduce is a whole bunch more layby parking, right? So now when you take the, the boulevard away, you know, the layby becomes, you know, the instrument for parking, which, you know, look at any, you know, well, our downtown's the only example of that. But the parking becomes layby format, which, you know, I don't think has any strong implications for us, pro or con. But, you know, we kind of rely on planning. Like, I, I, we, I've had this conversation with Luke. I think they have a plan. I think generally, you know, with my developer hat on and off, it makes sense to, to focus the money to where it makes the most impact for, for sidewalk development within the community. So.
Great. Thank you, John. So we'll go back. Has anyone else, any further questions that would like, they'd like to bring forward from what we've already discussed or it came up? Just put your hand up if, or yell, because I can't speak to everybody.
Quick question. Go ahead. Is your landscape going to be deer resistant?
Uh, we're pretty savvy to, to, you know, if, if you talk to a landscape architect, they'll tell you that nothing's deer resistant. The little guys are so adaptable. They figure out when you take one thing away, they find another. But certainly, we would be considering that as a factor in the plant specification. I think we got a pretty good bead on the last few projects on, on what's working and what's not. Everything I mentioned, drought tolerant. We've been using lots of grasses, lots of material that is pretty robust. I just got a text from Jamie who is on our landscape team. He's saying bunny resistant is actually becoming more of a
Yeah.
Yes, that is a factor. It will be considered.
Yeah, great.
I think just with that, you've also indicated drought resistant, which probably is as, as important. Andrew, Walter, or Susan, any other? Walter, go ahead. Unmute.
Um. There's a landscape plan that came with the package that we received. And the one that you showed is a little bit different. Is it basically the same one? Or is it just did it on CAD?
You know what? It's slightly advanced from the one you've received. We were, we were crunch time to get the application package out to the APC. So it has been slightly advanced with a little bit more specification included on it, a bit more description around the plant. So council will be seeing a plan that's more comprehensive.
On that plan, is it possible to, some of the things that you brought up earlier with regards to the, the retaining and stormwater management you had through, through your landscape plan? Maybe, maybe it could be shown where those retaining areas are. It's, you had planned in the one corner, up in the, yeah, up right where your cursor was and in almost two first lots. And just show us how you're doing that. Because that interface is, is an important part of the development and it's neighbor to the west, first of all. And also as part of what you're going to be using in your stormwater management plan to a degree, I'm thinking with retaining walls and and drainage systems. Would, would that be helpful?
Good suggestion. Absolutely. There is, you know, as you know too well, I mean, the early stages of rezoning, you're trying to get as much information out and you're trying to coordinate with as many different people as you can to get as much good information. At this point, we are, we are just dovetailing landscape and rainwater management altogether. And, you know, I think that we could certainly show a bit more information on that landscape plan. We'll absolutely do that.
The other, the other thing, John, is that for the very, along Sunningdale, there's probably going to be a, I'm, the way I'm seeing it, there's probably going to be some retaining down there as well. And along the sunning, you'll probably bring the grade up a little bit, I'm thinking, as a part of your stormwater management and rainwater or what, and your rain garden along the very bottom there, on Sunningdale. Is that, is that identified on your landscape plan as well? How that's going to be managed? Because it's all going downhill. So it's, that's where it's going. That's where it's going. And I'm just thinking that if you can And I'm just thinking that if you can, is it, does it show as a rain garden or does it?
Yeah. So at this point, we, we do identify where retaining structures are going to be required. And I think that, you know, we've, we've, we've visual or we've, we've envisioned that, but we haven't translated that onto the landscape plan at this point. So we will make sure that that gets translated on. You can see here, Walter, there is some interface retaining between the units, which, which will be required as well.
Yeah. The important one also is the one from the, the one along Sunnydale. And between the two houses there, that interface and the great differential. Because you've got a garage, garage to garage situation. And how that interface is going to work as well. That's going to be pretty steep, I'm thinking. Between driveway and driveway, those two, those ones.
Yeah, I wish I had some more images here to show you. But the reason we go garage to garage in that particular location is that that unit actually has a portion of, of lower level associated with it. So the, the, you're actually from this driveway, you're actually stepping up to the main floor of this unit. These driveways are almost on grade with one another. So, so this, this, uh, this unit is an anomaly to, to these two. It, it does change the, the profile of the building changes. There's actually retaining at this corner. So, you know, this is, you know, we're, we're, we're sort of, the, the idea of detached, single family, three lot, small lot. You know, sort of carefully planned is, is our approach. There is, you know, retaining is going to be a critical part of this particular site. Let's, we're going to add, we're going to add some more notation, some more information to make sure that, you know, we have, we have looked at it. We're just not communicating it appropriately through the drawing maybe.
Obviously, there's a patio there on, on the Sunnydale side as well. Coming from, I believe it's a living area. It's great big door. So there's there's elevations there. You're going to have to deal with.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Walter. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Then thank you for bringing everyone back to the screen. So we'll move now to comments, discussion about the application. We'll start with Walter. So in here, Walter, what we want to do is to, to have you discuss how you feel with the, the application, its merits, its distractions. Any, anything that you would like to see added? And then we'll discuss that as we go through the members.
Um, first of all, I, I, I really like the development. I think it's, it's well thought out. I, it's, checks off a whole bunch of boxes for housing needs in our, in our community. I, I, I like, I, I like the articulation of the buildings, the way within the streetscape or maybe think it, checks off those boxes as well. And I do like to see that perhaps the consideration for trying to meet the step code. I didn't say passive house, Maureen. Maybe. But if, if we can, I think the town's got to do something with respect to giving a better determination on what those goals are. And if, if the maybe planning department considers that, Luke, I guess that's more direct than you and how, what the expectations are for builders. And so that we, we become leaders. We, we have a town that has been leading in so many different ways with our, some of our own buildings. Particularly the fire hall and, and, and others. So if we can just get that, that level of energy efficiencies and try to meet the goals to a national provincial standard, that'd be great. That's something I'd, I'd like to see considered by planning. You can't ask for it here. But so I like the, the idea of the landscape, the streetscape or what what's being designed here as well. So I don't have a whole lot of other comments. That's liking it. So.
Thank you, Walter Maureen.
Um, yeah, as I said earlier, I think it's a great proposal. I really like what you're doing here. It's, as I say, a nice way to densify, you're providing alternate housing for young families or, or people who want to downsize and maybe stay in the house a little longer with that option of, you know, age and place or, or one level. Nice little designs, nicely articulated. I think the only thing I'm a little uncomfortable with, I would love to see a rear elevation because so often the houses look absolutely stunning from the front and not so great from the back. Um, which is obviously going to be quite an impact for the house behind. But overall, I, I have to say, it's, it's very, very impressive and I would, I would certainly, certainly support it.
And thank you, Maureen. Susan?
Um, I just, I think that one of the comments about the duplex idea, I can, due to these current zoning, I think it's great that the separation is there and that people have, will have windows on all sides of the building. And that's the one thing that I noticed in townhouse situations is that people are limited in their, their light space. And I think that's really important. Yeah. And the, the project, of course, is, it's, it's, it's a, a good, I would support that absolutely. I think getting three homes on a one, uh, home, single home property is a fantastic option for us at this point. We need projects like this.
Any, any conditions or changes that you'd like to see?
I, I too was questioning about the other side of the lane, but I'm certain that that is going to be addressed with all of the foliage that's going to be there for the, and certainly the, the current resident there has lots in place between them and the new project. So, yeah, that's it. That was the only thing I was thinking about.
Andrew. Uh, Bernadette, can we bring back the full screen of the participants, please?
Yeah. So much nicer to look at than.
I am sorry, my, I haven't been on it very much today, but my directive is not to video committee members. So that's why I keep the screen up. So I keep videoing when the, we're presenting something that's visual from the, from the client, but otherwise we are not, I've been directed not to show committee members faces.
Fair enough. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we might have to discuss that because this is the only, the audio is being recorded, is it not?
No, it is being videoed. That's why I'm not showing your faces, because people need to see the presentation.
Right. Okay. When, now, we'll, we'll discuss that sidebar with, with Luke. Okay, Andrew.
There's three things I'd like to say, and two of them are pretty cheeky. Um, and they're really probably more for loops than they are directly project related. With regards to the project, as usual, we're being presented with another really elegant piece of work, which I've seen for years from, from John and his family. And I think we're very, very lucky to have this quality of design expertise and sensitivity in the community. I think these buildings do feel residential and scale and massing and penetration and detailing. I think there's a lot of sensitivity in terms of room geometries, the flow of movement through the spaces. So I think this is exactly what we need. Now for my cheeky comments, and they're not directly related to this project, but we've talked a lot about the streetscape. And my own feeling is that many of the streetscapes in Qualicum are being destroyed by the neo fascist street lighting. We need to do something about this. It's a disastrous mistake, this LED lighting. It's destroying the quality of the nighttime experience for all the residents. And the last thing I want to say, but not least, and Luke knows this, is it's very, very difficult for me to support a building that doesn't have Corinthian columns. So I guess from that you can draw a conclusion that I'm very supportive. It's always delightful to see this. I hope we can do more of it in the right places with the right balance. The last comment I want to make is unfortunately, looking forward, I suspect these houses will cost between eight hundred and fifty and a million dollars. And we've got to do better somehow. I don't know how. It's a huge problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Comments that I have, I, the precedents have already been set for corner lots by the Larson Group. I would refer to a comprehensive design ten, which in two thousand sixteen Cedar and Mill was, was, was brought forward and then the new zoning R nineteen for the corner of Hemlock confirmed. I think done a great job in terms of, of being able to take these locations and, and turn them into quality, high quality residential additions to, to the town. Uh, in terms of the land use, we see that, 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 the specs for this CD eighteen are consistent and, and, and acceptable as, as the finished project is compatible with the existing development and meets the town's planning objectives as they are articulated in the OCP. Though while not conforming to the more prescriptive metrics of the OCP, it does address the overall visionary intent of it. There's redevelopment and intensive densification. There is diversity of housing being brought into the neighborhood. There is energy efficiency, however, we're going to describe energy efficiency. Certainly the efficient use of land by taking one, one lot and, and one house and, and turning it into three. And it definitely reflects the single family nature of the immediate neighborhood. So those are my comments. Is there any further comment that anyone would like to make before we attempt to put a motion together?
That was just very nicely said, Bill. Yeah.
So here comes the difficult part. Is it the chair's responsibility to form the motion, have someone then rubber stamp it? Or are we going to try and get the committee to come forward? I'm, I'm certainly more than willing to start this today with, with a suggested motion. So unless someone wants to jump forward with their hands and let me make the motion, I'll try. So Bernadette, are you ready?
Let, let's go for it.
Okay. I'm going to get the members to fill in a few blanks here later. But the motion is that the Advisory Planning Commission supports the application for one eighty-eight Sunnydale Road East, uh, subject to the following changes, which I don't think we have any changes, do we?
Well, we have, I think, subject to the completion of the stormwater management plan.
That's going to come later. Yeah. But we don't want any changes to the plans.
All right.
Correct? Okay. So we'll take out the subject two and then will we continue on and further that the following plans, as presented at the hearing, uh, form part of the application, and that is the tree and vegetation management plan, the landscaping plan, and a rainwater management plan that was not presented. And that further, the following plans be amended to address, and then the following, the landscaping plan, there was, there was some concerns, I think, with retaining walls and what have you. Is there? Do we want to specify anything regarding, regarding that, Walter? Or just accept it as it is?
Yeah, I did. Actually, that was more a comment to, to the design team, just include something like that. It's been discussed. I think, I, I, I think we all understand what, what's going to be done. But on the planet, it could be detailed, some of the retaining areas.
So we want the landscaping plan to illustrate retaining?
Yes, some of the, the retaining areas in the, the top two lots and also the difference, the elevation heights, particular between the lower two units.
And elevations.
Yeah.
And then the rainwater management plan, which is in the process of being developed. I'm going to take the rainwater management plan out of the items that were shown to the, to, to the, to the, to the committee and put it down here where that has to be added in later. So let me go back and, and read what we've, is there any other discussion or, or in terms of things that we could bring into this? I can't see everyone, so please yell or. Okay. So Bernadette, we'll try this again. That the Advisory Planning Commission supports the application for one eighty-eight Sunnydale Road East. Uh, and further that the following plans are presented at, as presented at the hearing, form part of the application. The tree and vegetation management plan.
Sorry, can I just stop you there for just a second? Just hold that.
Again, I will, I will send you once.
Following friends as presented, and then you, you go on to say, okay, state is tree and vegetation plan.
Uh, and the landscaping plan.
Landscaping plan.
And further, and then, and then further that the following plans be amended to address the landscaping plan include retaining walls and elevations. And that a rainwater, a rainwater management plan be submitted.
Great.
Okay. So is there any, do we need to read that back? Or is there any changes that would like to be made to it? Please speak. I can't see hands. So please speak up. If you can read it back to us, um, Bernadette, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, so that the Advisory Planning Commission supports the application for one eight, eight, eight Sunnydale Road East. And further that the following plans be presented.
As presented.
As presented at the meeting.
Hearing.
Hearing. The hearing, the Advisory Planning Commission recommends the following changes to the application for one and eight. Is it one triple eight Sunnydale? Sorry, one eight eight Sunnydale. Road East, tree vegetation, tree and vegetation plan, landscaping plan. And further that the following plans be amended to address landscaping plan to include retaining walls and elevations. Rainwater management plan be submitted.
So moved.
Is it? So moved. Thank you, Walter. A second, please. Yell out. Thank you, Andrew. A second by Andrew. Call the question. I guess we should have further discussion. Is there further discussion? Jump forward. Seeing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Opposed of any? Hearing none, carried. I will ask, thank you all. Thank you. Ask for motion to adjourn. Again, just yell it out.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Susan. And Maureen seconded it?
Sure.
Discussion. Here is seeing none. Call a question. All those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, carried. Thank you all for a great afternoon. I think that we were, we're working well together and we'll get even better as, as the application is forward. Thank you, Luke, for, for organizing the first part of the meeting and helping us through some of the technical sides.